Let me call this meeting to order. This is the agenda of a special meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas, Friday, June 28th, 2019 at 5:06. We're in Commission Chamber, City Hall, at 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite 8, Rio Grande City, Texas. We'll go to item one, roll call.
Mayor Villarreal.
I'm sorry.
Yes, roll call?
No, I'm sorry. We'll have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Mr. Jones for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Ramirez for the invocation.
Lord God, thank you for allowing us to be here today to conduct city business. I still please clear our minds and give us wisdom so we may do what's right for our community, and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. May the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Honor this flag, the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the United States.
Mr. Jones, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. We'll go to item B, roll call, and final call.
Mayor Villarreal. Mayor Villarreal is absent. Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Garza.
Thank you. Let's move on to number two, resolutions. Item made, discussion of possible action to approve resolution 2019-14 determining a public necessity to acquire certain property, giving notice to an official determination to acquire the property described generally as 0.036 acres located at NEC Highway.
Northeast corner.
Northeast corner, Highway 83 and Old Highway 83 of Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas, for the city's lift station project.
Mayor Protem, I move the city of Rio Grande City to send the property owners an initial and final offer letter and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire properties described generally as 0.036 acres located at northeast corner, Highway 83 and Old Highway 83, Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas, for the city's lift station project.
I have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
I'm just gonna call roll call, Mr. Garza.
You want me to have the vote first?
No, it has to be specific.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Protem Mernangarza.
Four.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Four.
Commissioner Flores.
Four.
Commissioner Jones.
Four.
And Mayor is absent.
Item passes. Let's go to item number three.
Real quick, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Before we go to the next item, we just wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge one of our employees in our department and with the city. Mr. Enrique Cantú just received his GED, and we want to acknowledge him for the work that he's put in. Since I've come in, we've been working close together. We have some internal goals that we have for each other, holding each other accountable to some things that we want to accomplish. One of the biggest things that he's doing is working on getting some of his licenses, water plant, wastewater treatment plant licenses, but in order to do that, you have to have a minimum of GED, and so he went and achieved that. I know we had Mo here last month, and so this is another employee that's coming in that's taken that step to move up in the department and move up for our city, so I want to give him a big round of applause, Mr. Enrique.
Would you guys want to take a picture with him?
Sure.
Come down. He's a man of few words.
Be careful.
Steven.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Hold on, Chris, fantastic. Congratulations.
As soon as we found out he passed, I registered for the next class, so he'll be going July 23rd through the 25th. It's actually on his birthday as well, too. He'll be in training already, so his birthday present is to go for training.
Thank you. Congratulations, and good luck. Ready to move on, we'll go to item number three, planning, discussion and possible action. Variance requested by Elio Livares for base flood elevation requirements for property located at 709 East Third Street in Rio Grande City, Starr County, Texas. Mr. Perez.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, last meeting, we were instructed to go back and work things out, so we've put a PowerPoint presentation of Mr. Milan and staff, and he's gonna go through that in hopes that we simplify things as to how we got where we are and what to go next, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Milan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Garza, Commissioners. This presentation is about Mr. Elio Livares' project, fourplex project. I begin with first slide. Mr. Livares purchased this original townsite lot, which is lot number four, block 73 of the original townsite, for a tax sale on August 17th, 2016. On late 2016, December, he gets a demolition permit for an existing structure that was there. It was the home right there.
So that was demolished?
Yes, that was demolished, an old home. It doesn't need any modern setbacks or code requirements, and basically outdated, falling apart structure. On 2017, a year later, Mr. Livares proposes a two-story apartment duplex and asks for planning zoning for a setback variance from five feet to three feet, which at the time the variance was stable, and by being tabled, he actually opted out of that option, and the current proposed building is now from three feet to regular five feet side setbacks. In 2019, February, Mr. Livares submits a set of plans to the plan department. They were requested to submit also electronically on February, that's the date right there, February 2019. On February 2017, the plan department receives the electronic copy of the plans and they forward it to our engineering department and the fire department. That same day, we received a reply from the city engineer and mentioned some of the requirements to comply with the code, including the parking spaces to be wide enough. Originally, they were proposed to be eight feet inches, and the city engineer clearly specifies here to be nine feet and 18 inches long. Fire department also does their review by March 12th, and the highlight of their review was the start case modifications to be in compliance. Training statement was done on February 25th, submitted to the plan department also. On April 9th, 2019, Mr. Livares banked requirements and deadlines to meet their deadlines, a building permit, a conditional building permit was issued upon obviously submitting all the proper documentation. That was on April 9th, 2019. This permit again was to, basically, we, the department got phone calls also from the bank stating that should he not get a permit, his loan probably would have been canceled. But again, this is just a permit. The condition was not to proceed with the foundation until he get all the proper documentation, including a flood elevation certificate. There it is, the elevation certificate submitted. And where is indicated the base elevation at the time. This is, again, this is a FEMA document, signed and sealed by the representing engineer. Sealed, you cannot see it here, signature right there. On May 28th, the final review from Rio Delta's comments were submitted, and if you notice, basically, it was ready to be, to proceed, except, you know, maybe there would have been a difference of a couple of feet on elevations.
Maybe what?
A difference in elevations for a couple of feet. In other words, their elevation maybe could have been lowered by two or three feet. They had to prove how they found those elevations. Due to the doubt on the elevation certificate, the plan department went ahead and submitted a third-party review, and this was done by May 30th, and this was done by Ruben Chapa. He used to be a former flood payment manager here in town, and he was in agreement with Mr. Gerro's comment in reference to difference in elevations. On June 3rd, 2019, due to an observation by the plan department, the work was started on the foundation, however, it was believed that the difference in elevations was not met or approved.
I thought we had issued out a permit.
Yes, sir, a conditional permit.
But now you're saying that it was not approved?
Well, it was, they had a permit to have so they could keep the loan, but then the condition was that until all the paperwork was met, they could proceed. And acknowledging the difference in elevations, Mr. Livares asked for an elevation variance from planning and zoning, and stated he was willing to sign a waiver of responsibility. Even a city attorney has already worked on a template for his waiver of, for the city for responsibility.
Since you're there, let me clarify one thing. Mr. Livares showed up to our office twice. We told Mr. Livares, we don't represent Mr. Livares, we represent the city. We didn't work on a template. We gave you some wording that we suggested should go on a waiver, but we're not saying that that waiver is enough or would cover the city. We just, we suggested some.
Language.
Language, correct.
Yes.
But I don't want to misguide the city that I did a waiver on behalf of the city for the city. I didn't even meet with Mr. Livares because he's not who we represent, but we did forward to Mr. Milan some strong language that we suggested for Mr. Livares to put on the waiver, not for the city. No employee from the city can do it or counsel, because I don't want to leave a representation that you covered through that waiver. But we said, if Mr. Livares wants to use this language, that's up to him. But again, I just want to make it clear that it was not counsel who said this waiver works, or we don't want it done by any employee of the city, because then there's gonna be an impression in the future, if there's litigation, while the city prepared it. Was that language used? We forwarded to them. I don't know if it was used or not, but it was forwarded to Mr. Milan. Was that language used, Mr. Milan?
It's still to be signed. In case the variance is approved, we would need to authorize sign.
Oh, was it used?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe I have to get closer.
There it is.
Sorry. Too many slides. There. Let's play. Okay. On the keyboard. There.
Okay. Okay. Special PNC was scheduled on June 5th, 2019.
Why stop? Oh, you're moving it.
There it is.
That's what I said.
Who's in control?
What are we having here for?
On that meeting, the planning and zoning had recommended counsel for approval of the variance request. This letter that Mr. Livares voluntarily submitted previous to the suggested language that our city attorney suggested us to include, that's a advice letter to be signed in the event he gets a warrant. That's a copy of his flood insurance, that's the existing condition. This picture was taken, as it says on the notes, on June 30th, 2019, at 8:17 a.m., having said that he didn't begin construction until at this point.
The what?
He didn't begin the project until June, after all the comments, however, the elevation seems to differ from our city engineer department.
So do you want to turn over where, I guess, the documentation that was submitted by both, Mr. Garza and Rio Delta, to go over the points and where they are now? I think they, you all had discussions back and forth with Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay.
On Tuesday?
Yes. So do you want to just briefly go over where you all arrived at, or where do you think you're at, as far after that discussion with Mr. Garza?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Why? I wasn't here that day, but, you know, this, this commission usually goes with recommendations from PNC, and, you know, I, you know, I have no idea what we're doing here, but we usually go with recommendations that PNC has, you know, and if PNC recommended, you know, this to go forward, you know, I have no idea what we're doing here, you know, and at this time, I just want to make a motion to approve this and move on from this, because, you know, we're kind of contradicting what PNC is doing, and I don't think that this is, you know, the proper procedure for us to be doing this, you know. We should have looked at, you know, what PNC was, was actually, what was presented to them at that time, not bring it up to the commission during this time for us to make, to, you know, determine what's wrong and what's right on this, you know, when this board usually, you know, any time that I, the past seven years that I've been here, you know, we usually feed off of what PNC is doing, and for us to be doing this to the PNC commission, to me, it's just wrong. It's just wrong, you know. So at this time, I just, I just want to do, get over this, you know, and, you know, it's been approved already, and I want to feed off of the recommendation of PNC, and Mayor, I move, you know, I move to, you know, to approve this.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Also in the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jones to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Have any further discussion? This time, I would like to continue, continue with the discussion.
Yes, sir. The, basically, at this point, after being approved, obviously, we still need to do foundation inspections, make sure that all the setbacks are met, and parking spaces to be addressed also.
Was it inspected?
Not yet, sir.
Huh?
Not yet. We still need to do an official foundation inspection.
How long did it take to do all that work?
The weekends.
Huh?
One day, two days.
Did you say weekend or week? No, I think we applied for a permit with the plumbing inspection. So somewhere along the record, it should say we passed the plumbing inspection, even before we put the rebar, even before we did the ditches. So the plumbing has passed already, and we had to, I think it's together, one time that you're working weekends, they are working weekends, but the inspection plumber only comes on Saturdays, is what I understand, is that right?
I'm not sure, so I'll have to change.
Well, my report says they only do it on Saturdays, I'm not too sure anybody here in Fort Myers, but the plumbing inspection is done only on Saturdays. So we have an inspection that says we, the plumbing, we passed, and that was prior to, obviously, doing all the termite treatment, the ditches, the rebar and all that stuff. So we called to get the inspection done, and that's when we found out that we had all this, this information came on. But we had done the plumbing already, and had somebody to have a record on that.
Well, my question is, Mr. Perez, how come we didn't stop it in the plumbing inspection?
I think there was a question about where the elevation point was actually secured from for the base elevation itself. At the time that the information made it to Rio Delta, that's where the comments coming back from the city engineer were showing, somebody needs to go back and check this, because there's a discrepancy. They're, they're getting different information from what they have, and that's where the flag came.
But why, how come we didn't stop the project when they inspected the plumbing?
Because I think they.
That's an independent inspector, and.
Who called, who called the inspection to be made?
I don't know, sir, I need to confirm that, but one thing is for sure, we still need to do a foundation inspection, in other words, at that point.
Because in the last meeting, in the last meeting, if I remember correctly, we issued out a permit for the construction.
Yes, sir.
And nothing was mentioned about issuing the permit for the purposes of acquiring the finances for the project. Nobody said anything about that the last meeting, that I remember.
But that's what, and of course, to make sure that we receive all the documentation in reference to elevations and to suffice the review by our city engineer.
So I don't know, can Rio Delta touch on what, why at that point did you all let flag it? Why not before? In other words, when you were given the information, why was that information not provided before?
So we need to review for. We did two reviews for this project. One was in February 27th, and the second one was on February 28th. In both, do they have a copy of these reviews or not?
Yeah, that is one.
This is May 28th.
Well, that's the latest, that is the latest we did. If you go to number four, Gilbert makes an emphasis where the elevation needs to be confirmed, and that is the last review we did. We stated before, we just do reviews, provide recommendations. It is up to the staff to whether they follow their own recommendations and they check on the recommendations. This is what I can say on behalf of our firm. Last, they, we checked on this, it was May 28th, and still there were some concerns based on this review, and it was before that they built, I mean, who gave them the okay to go ahead and proceed with the construction, or, I don't, we don't know, that's something that sat over our office.
So basically, with the conditional permit, they were not supposed to start any of that?
I would have said no.
So I'd like to show, the first comment was done in February, nothing was mentioned but the level.
I'm sorry, sir?
This is the first comment we got. We addressed every single item, all 60. It was like a month prior, this is the last one. And on the last comment, it only says six inches. Doesn't say two and a half feet like we did Tuesday, doesn't say four feet like we said in the city commission. It said that Ruben exactly met the four feet. Remember it was four feet?
Right, right, right. That was mentioned the last.
Yes, now Tuesday, Mr. Gerro said two and a half, and in this case, if you, the first we heard about the flood zone was six inches, unless we're the best or, also in the balance, we lack to have a balance from the recommendation from Mr. Chapa.
Now, was that six inches based on the information you had provided, or did they have all the information?
That's the information we provided.
Right, okay, at that time?
Yes.
So did the information change anywhere along that spectrum?
Well, I think Rio Delta can point to the fact that what's in the plan and what's in the certificate are two different things.
So I have a foot.
But is there a difference there? Because once, part of the conditional permit is.
Was it the first?
Hold on. Part of the conditional permit is to go ahead and construct based on what you're supposed to do, right? And if there's any flags anywhere along the way, the planning department can go ahead and stop that if they're not complying based on the parameters that we have set, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because at any point in time, a project can be stopped if it's not meeting or in compliance with the original plan and the structure of the permit.
And just like anything along, any project, you know, I mean, we still need to do framing inspections, electrical, plumbing, air condition, at that point.
Right, so here's the point, you get a permit that's not free-wheel and say, okay, you can do whatever you want either, so let's not promote that we're actually saying that here either, right?
Well, this is the first time I heard this one just permit. I haven't heard it. This is the first.
So Livares?
Do I have heard it or not?
Let him speak. So Livares?
Thank you, sir.
You can go ahead and stand up there, sir, please.
Regarding, I've never heard of conditional permit, and as regard on the four nights that the permits were issued, they were not telling me they were conditional, but it had nothing to do with the banking. I don't, I didn't understand that, that part. I explained in the last meeting that we had, that when I applied for the loan, the bank required that I have flood insurance because it was in a flood zone. So I went to insurance company, they requested an elevation certificate, and that's what I got, and I got the loan approved. The loan wasn't approved because of the permit, the loan was approved because I met the requirements of the bank. So I don't know how that has anything to do with the conditional permit, I don't understand that part.
Well, at this point, all I'm gonna say is, at this point, I've heard the recommendation from the PNC, I've heard the comments that were made at the last city commissioner's meeting, and for comments here today, and I agree with Mr. Jones, so I think I'm comfortable. I mean, at this point, Mr. Livares here to request for our variance, for our, yes, a variance request, so yes, we understand that there might be a discrepancy on as far as the elevation is concerned, but again, I'm comfortable with my motion earlier.
Okay.
So with that being said, I think, you know, call for our vote, Mayor, and.
But all the commissioners, are you set to make a decision based on all the information that's been presented here, or do you still have any questions that need to be addressed? I know you guys are ready, but is the rest of the commission ready to make that decision?
I have a question, Mr. Livares. The flood insurance that you obtained, who does that cover? Does it cover your property, or does it cover the surrounding properties?
Well, it would only cover my property. Why would it cover the surrounding properties?
Right, so everybody's ready to then at this time, or do you still have?
I'm ready.
If you're ready, you have, I mean, that's the whole point of being here, Commissioner, is to make sure we answer those questions, because planning and zoning is an advisory commission. They're advising us, and yes, the majority of the time, we go with based on what they recommend, but not all the time, because sometimes they do get it wrong.
I do understand, Mayor, but I see that there's some issues being brought up now that should have been brought up then.
But my issue with that, Mayor, is that there was some, there was conflicting information provided when they obtained the permit, and then there are discrepancies on the plan, and then what ended up resulting, and the fact that it was conditional, that they were not supposed to be doing this, and then the biggest issue is liability to the city.
Right.
Because he can waive, he can waive liability, we're not going to the city, but what about the neighbors? They're not waiving anything. And the flood insurance, yes, it covers you, but it doesn't cover anybody else. That is my issue with the whole situation.
Right. Call the tubo. that's something that's out of our office.
So basically with the, the conditional permit, they were not supposed to start any of that?
I would have said no.
So, the first comment was done in February, nothing's mentioned but-
I'm sorry, sir?
This is the first comment we got. We addressed every single item, all sixteen. It was like a month prior, this is the last one. And on the last comment, it's only six inches. Doesn't say two and a half feet like we did Tuesday, doesn't say four feet like we said in the city commission. It was, uh, it said that Ruben exactly met the four feet. Remember it was four feet?
Right, right, right. Those mentioned the last-
Yes, now Tuesday, Mr. Garza said two and a half and now in this case, two. But first, when we heard about the flood zone, it was six inches. Also, we like to have files from the recommendation from Mr. Chapa.
Now, was that six inches based on the information you had provided or did they have all the information?
That's the information we provided.
Right, okay, at that time?
Yes.
So did the information change anywhere along that spectrum?
Well, no.
I think Rio Delta can point to the fact that what's in the plan and what's in the certificate are two different things.
So I put-
But is there a difference there? Because once, part of the conditional permit is, hold on, part of the conditional permit is to go ahead and construct based on what you're supposed to do, right? And if there's any flags anywhere along the way, the planning department can go ahead and, and stop that if they're not complying based on the, the parameters that we have set, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because at any point in time, a project can be stopped if it's not meeting or in compliance with the original plan and the structure of, of the permit.
And just like anything along, any project, you know, I mean, we still need to do framing inspections, electrical, plumbing, air condition at that point.
Right, so here's the point, you get a permit that's not free wheel and say, okay, you can do whatever you want either, so let's not promote that we're actually saying that here either, right?
Well, this is the first time I heard a conditional permit. I haven't heard it. This is the first.
So Olivares?
Do I have heard or not?
Let, let him speak. Mr. Olivares?
Thank you.
You can go ahead and stand up there, sir, please.
Regarding, I've never heard a conditional permit and as regard on the four nights that the permits were issued, they were not told me they were conditional, but it had nothing to do with the banking. I, I don't, I didn't understand that, that, that part. I explained in the last meeting that we had, that when I applied for the loan, the bank required that I have flood insurance because it was in a flood zone. So I went to the insurance company, they requested an elevation certificate and that's what I got and I got the loan approved. The loan wasn't approved because of the permit, the loan was approved because I met the requirements of the bank. So I don't know how that has anything to do with the conditional permit, I, I don't understand that part.
Well, at this point, all I'm gonna say is, at this point, I've heard the recommendation from the PNC, I've heard the comments that were made at the last city commissioner's meeting and for comments here today and I agree, Mr. Jones, so I think I'm comfortable. I mean, at this point, Mr. Olivares here to request for a variance, offer, yes, a variance request, so yes, we understand that there might be a discrepancy as far as the elevation is concerned, but again, I'm comfortable with my motion earlier. So with that being said, I think, you know, call for our vote, mayor, and-
Okay, but all the commissioners, are you set to make a decision based on all the information that's been presented here? Or do you still have any questions that need to be addressed? I know you guys are ready, but is the rest of the commission ready to make that decision?
I, I have a question, Mr. Olivares. The flood insurance that you obtained, who does that cover? Does it cover your property or does it cover the surrounding properties?
Well, it would only cover my property, why would it cover the surrounding properties?
Right, so everybody's ready to then at this time? Or do you still have, if you have, if you're ready, you have, I mean, that's the whole point of being here, commissioner, is to make sure we answer those questions, because planning and zoning is an advisory commission. They're advising us and yes, the majority of the time, we go with based on what they recommend, but not all the time, because sometimes they do get it wrong.
I do understand, mayor, but I, I see that there's some issues being brought up now that should have been brought up then.
But my, my issue with that, mayor, is that there were some, there was conflicting information provided when they obtained the permit and then there's discrepancies on the plan and then what ended up resulting and the fact that it was conditional that they were not supposed to be doing this and then the biggest issue is that liability to the city.
Right.
Because he can waive, he can waive liability, we're not going to, to the city, but what about the neighbors? They're not waiving anything. And the flood insurance, yes, it covers you, but it doesn't cover anybody else. That is my issue with the, the, the whole situation.
Right. Call me to vote. All right, so ready to make a decision, commissioners?
Yeah.
All right. Then at this time, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones to approve item three A, the possible action variance. Second by Commissioner Ramirez. At this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we have three. All those against, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this time, it passes based on three to two. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next business in order, we have three B, discussion on possible action on variance for off-street parking requirements for property at seven oh nine East Third Street in Rio Grande City.
Mayor has previously stated, the original layout of the parking lot of this same project had less than nine feet wide parking spaces and it would eventually have eight parking spaces, which is required for the four units, two per unit. However, to make the, the full size, they would have to sacrifice one parking space. So at this point, they're proposing seven parking spaces, I'll get this slide. But there, they need, they would only be up by one parking space. They still have a handicap parking space available and also under code and we were, we went over with legal, we need to clarify that part. As it is, you know, it allows for a one-bedroom apartment to be one point half of parking space is required. There's no such thing as half, but the site plan was based also on that assumption that a one-bedroom would require one parking space. However, we need to fix that, because again, it's, it's one and a half required according to ordinance as it is.
So may I ask him a question real quick? All spaces are within the property?
Yes, all of them are, yes.
All the ones that they're actually presenting?
We've got seven as opposed to eight.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, because again, we wouldn't, we didn't want to sacrifice the, the widening of-
Right. So how are you gonna fit, you said, how many spaces are they gonna have again, just to make sure?
Fourplex, huh?
Yeah. Three in the front and four by the alley.
Four by the alley?
Yeah, not on the alley, but by the alley.
Trying to envision it, because I went to the property the other day and it just seemed so small for what's trying to be erected in this, in this area.
This is three that you have, one, two, three. Here's the handicap, seven, by six, seven and to meet the code or the city's requirement, this is the other half. Again, talked to legal a couple of times and they want to read that.
But it won't impede on any of the neighbors or any issues there?
No.
No? Would that, you saw that as well?
I'll be sure to write a comment, sir. I'll do it. Just consider what the ordinance says and if you're helping, renting a place where you might help me in one day and your apartment got designated for you, that's all that I'm gonna comment at this point.
Okay. You lost me, sir. You lost me, so what do you mean? I mean, help me understand this. Is there an issue or there's not an issue?
Ordinance says two parking space per unit.
Right, okay.
There's four units, they need eight parking spaces.
Correct.
It's simple, there's gonna be a parking lot within the facilities.
Okay, but is it gonna affect the neighbors in that area or absolutely not? Is there gonna be, are we gonna have neighbors coming to us and complaining about parking in that area?
I don't know about neighbors coming in, but it could create a conflict. There's a little right in front that parks, it's winters and there's, I believe, like six to seven staff that work there for that, so it, it could create a problem, but that's just our opinion, it is your decision.
All right, so going back to you then, so no issues there, Mr. Milan, in your opinion, having done this for so long?
But again, he's got seven parking spaces, like Julio said, he, he needs eight, that's why he's asking for a variance. If you read the existing ordinance, it has a one-bedroom, it asks for a one-point-five parking space. These are the city ordinance two thousand and seven dash nine.
So are these one-bedroom apartments or two-bedroom?
One of these has one bedroom.
So, so we pretty much meet that requirement?
Yes, as it is. So again, the, it's a, it's a little vague because there's no comment or board, but then it's fourplex and six faces here, it's only-
So we're off by half a parking, parking space?
Yes, basically.
All right. So any other questions?
He's asking, we're half a parking.
Well, that's fine, I'm comfortable, I'm the motion to approve.
Should I drive motorcycle, sorry?
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez at this time. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order, actually, no, it's adjournment. All right, so we have a motion to adjourn by someone?
Someone?
Okay, we have motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Five forty-two.